You ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
How about we start by saying, can they hear us? Yeah, all right. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bogota Board of Education for September 20th, 2022 to order, please stand for the flag salute. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record filed with the clerk of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Erfan, may I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Alvarez?
Present.
Mr. Alvarez?
Present.
Mr. Chavez?
Present.
Mrs. Cruz?
Present.
Mrs. Coles?
Here.
Mrs. Olivo?
Present.
Mr. Ortega?
Present.
Mrs. Rocket, absent, Mr. Miranda?
Present.
We have a call.
And for the record, Mrs. Rocket's plane got delayed in Boston, and she won't be able to attend this meeting. I just got a call about two hours ago, so. Also present, our superintendent Damian Kennedy, board attorney William Sukis, school business administrator and board secretary, and assistant board secretary Elizabeth Ruiz. Thank you for being here today. I'd like to open the floor to hearing of citizens on agenda items only. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Coles?
Coles, may I have a second?
Chavez?
Chavez, is there any discussion, board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to address agenda items only? Please state your name and address on agenda items only. We have no one present in public, do we have anyone online? Kennedy? No one from the public online? Can you hear us? Do I have a motion to close hearing of citizen items on agenda items only?
Motion, Olivo.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Coles.
Perfect. Coles?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Coles. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Moving on to section 3.1 of our agenda, superintendent's report, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes. So first, I am pulling item 7 dot 10. I am pulling that from the agenda. This is a personnel matter that we cannot discuss in public, but we will go into executive and go over the reasons with the board. Also, tomorrow night, we are in person back to school night for the first time, and I think about three years. We are starting tomorrow at Bixby. Thursday will be at Steen. The following week on Wednesday, we'll be going to the middle school, and then on Thursday, the high school. Just a quick reminder to all the families out there that if your school has back to school night, it is a single session day, so please make sure you make adjustments for that. Also, the website is almost updated and completed. Once finalized, we'll be pushing out the Bogota app for all smartphones. This is going to provide the latest updates for the schools and for the district. You will also be able to view our social media and YouTube channels. District and school calendars will also be available, and maybe the best feature is we're going to be able to do push notifications right to your phone. So schools on top of the district will be able to send out push notifications to your phone like a Facebook notification. Everyone knows about that, I'm sure. A reminder that the district will be closed on Monday for Rosh Hashanah. And then also, last Thursday, we reviewed the health standards virtually with Mr. Chang and about 50 parents, as well attended. There was a lot of great questions, and just the overall take from the meeting is very simply that our PE and health teachers began yesterday reviewing the standards and working on lessons. Anything that is deemed sensitive, we will be sharing with the families before they are introduced to the students. All students will have the right, all parents will have the right to opt out their students for any standard that they feel is controversial or too sensitive for them, and they would like to do it their way. There is no problem with that. That will, all this information will be going out in a letter very soon, but we will spend one night once the lessons are completed and review them with families so that they are comfortable and know exactly what we are doing. We will make all the lessons available on our website so that they can review that too as well. So that's where we are with that process, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Moving on to resolution 4 dot 3, approval of agenda items 4 dot 1 and 4 dot 2, minutes of the open sessions of August 23rd, 2022, open and closed sessions. Do I have a motion on 4 dot 3?
Motion, Coles?
Mrs. Coles?
Second, John.
Mr. Ortega? Any board discussion? Thank you. Mr. Roll call, Mr. Erfan?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
I abstain because I wasn't here. Thank you.
Mr. Chavez?
I will also abstain because I did not make that meeting.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
I'll abstain, wasn't here.
Mrs. Olivo?
I'll, I need to abstain as well. I wasn't here for this meeting.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
It doesn't pass, does it matter? Yes.
We have four yes and four abstain.
Oh, so it does, I think it's passed. It passes, right? Okay.
Motion carried. Thank you.
There's no matter on policy section. Moving on to section of education portion of the agenda, resolution 6 dot 4, approval of agenda items 6 dot 1 through 6 dot 3. Do I have a motion on 6 dot 4?
Motion, Coles?
Mrs. Coles? Second, Mrs. Alvarez? Any board discussion? May I have a roll call, Mr. Erfan?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolution 6 dot 7, which is for the approval of agenda items 6 dot 5 through and 6 dot 6. Is there a motion to approve 6 dot 7? Am I missing something?
I don't know if I screwed up. Do you have 6 dot 8 on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez, do I have a second?
Chavez.
Chavez, roll call, Mr. Erfan?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolution 6 dot 8, approval of emergency virtual remote instruction planning, plan, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve resolution 6 dot 8?
Motion.
Idalia Alvarez, sorry. And Robert Alvarez, perfect. Second. Any board discussion? Mr. Erfan, roll call, please.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to personnel portion of the agenda, resolution 7 dot 7, approval of agenda items 7 dot 1 through 7 dot 6. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 7 dot 7?
Motion, Coles?
Coles, do I have a second?
Olivo.
Olivo, any board discussion? Erfan, roll call.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Board, take record of this. Moving on to resolutions 7 dot 11, which is approval of agendas items 7 dot 8 through 7 dot 10. I'd like to point to the board and the public to also be aware that 7 dot 10 has been removed from this evening's agenda, so resolution 7 dot 11 will be amended to serve as the approval of the agenda items 7 dot 8 to 7 dot 9 only. You have that for the record, correct? All right, board, do I have a motion to approve resolution 7 dot 11 as amended?
Motion, Chavez?
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Alvarez, Idalia Alvarez, any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Erfan. Moving on to the portion of finance of the agenda, resolution 8 dot 11, approval of consent agenda items 8 dot 1 through 8 dot 10. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 8 dot 11?
Motion, Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, do I have a second, Alvarez? Robert Alvarez, any discussion? Mr. Erfan, roll call.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the buildings and grounds portion of the agenda, resolution 9 dot 1, approval of request for county approval for dual use of educational space. Is there a motion to approve resolution 9 dot 1?
Motion, John.
Mr. Ortega, is there a second?
Second.
Idalia Alvarez, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolution... Sorry, resolution 10 dot 1, committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? No. Okay. For those who are on the committee, I'm trying to remember.
Which committee does the hall?
We did the diversity committee.
So we, we did have the diversity committee meeting several times back in the summer. You're probably not all familiar, but for the public, Rosh Hashanah, this is the first year we observe, observed that holiday and many other holidays. We've opened up four more holidays. We've opened up to our community and diversified the, the holiday schedule in Bogota. So yes, you know, for those celebrating Rosh Hashanah, is this your first celebration on behalf of the school district? Kudos to the board for opening up, for being open minded in diversifying what we offer our community. And then, Mr. Kennedy, thank you so much for walking us through the process and to all the administrators. So this is our first Rosh Hashanah in Bogota. Maybe for some of us, it might not, you know, we might not know what that means. For those who showed up and discussed it, parents, we opened up the dialogue. It means a lot to them. So applause to them and enjoy your holiday.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When you add new holidays on your school calendar, how does that affect the end of the year? Do we have to do a certain amount of extra days?
Now, we, so what we did was part of the negotiations when they opened up the contract was we went down to 180 days, but we switched out some other holidays to make it work. So we're getting off about the same time again, and I still have three snow days built in, so I think we're, I think we're done the same time we were this year, about the 20th.
Okay.
Does that answer? Thank you. Moving on to buildings and, I'm sorry, next on the agenda is old business items 11 dot 1. Is there any old business the board would like to discuss? Okay, so I do have something to say just to put on the record, and for parents who have concerns and those who brought their concerns on the PE, the new PE standards, I myself got a, a more broad breakdown from, from the state and things you pull up. So I too had some concerns, I think plenty of questions, some advocacy's on both sides. I think for those on education know that I, I try to stay the middle and maybe balance what my moral compass is and, and what not of others and what belongs in some people. So I will say that I, I, for the record, I do wish the state, when they pass standards down, as they call it, they, they educate the board, boards across the state a little more, that they provide some classes and tell us what it is, what's their objective, what is the reasoning behind it? Because we hear a lot about science, and we hear science says and science does, and then 10 years later, we hear science made a mistake, science is wrong. And I, and this is more for the record on state, I don't know how it can be shared. I know there's plenty of boards discussing this matter and putting their point of views. I wish they shared more with us so that we know a little, you know, we get more in depth to make a much more informed decision because it is our duty as we get elected to serve our community, and that's a different community from Ritual Park, that's a different community from TNEP. It also is our duty to protect children and their long run of education and how they grow up, right? And as Mr. Kennedy said, sometimes it's almost the educator's duty to, to teach them what they don't teach them at home or rightfully teach them what they teach them at home. I, I never want to say what's right or wrong. I'm, what I would love to point out is the state continuously puts things upon us in more of a dreadful manner instead of a manner and a position of education sometimes. If you don't vote yes, if you don't do this, then you lose this, and I don't think that that's what education has transformed to be, right? It's, it's more, these are the options, this is the opportunities, these are the pros and cons that allow people to decide, and every board member should be up here to decide based on what you think is right and what your community is asking you to be right. The third part about this is that the state puts things upon us, and today, yes, we've taken a different position, a different stand. It is left to local boards and local administrators or school districts to decide what that standard piles down to be, how it's broken down, how it's basically dissected, disseminated, and taught. And what I've recognized is that, yeah, it is on us, but there's a cost factor to that, right? Our educators are continuously strained with more and more and more. At the end of the day, they are human beings. If I put more workload on you or resident or administrators, there's a, there's a nuance that goes with that. There's, there's a lot that's, that falls on our plates, meaning the educators. So what time do we really get to teach the bottom line, the substance that we need, the math, the reading, right? How much more time do we put into the educational performance of our school district? So all I'm asking, and I'm only one voice, but I think I've heard others say it as well, and I've, I've read enough to see, they have to start funding school districts a little more vigorously. We have gas taxes, we have other taxes that are supposedly are designed to flourish our school district in the state of New Jersey. We get some, but it's simply not enough. And if we're going to start asking educators to separate the students and separate this or separate that, that's segregation in itself, in my opinion. So how about you educate and you, you finance and you fund educators to understand, you know, when you're in a classroom for 10 years, you get on, you get a developmental hours and time to grow and teach more and teach more, but that's simply not enough. It's not enough for our administrators, it isn't fair to our educators, and it isn't fair to this board to not know every detail, right? It really isn't. And I ask of the state to teach, if, you know, if you're going to put things on our lap and say you have to vote for this by X date, well, then educate us and finance and give us more resources, more classroom resources, more, you know, expenditures that we can put across and help our administrators find solutions. So that's, that's just for the record. I too had concerns, I'm sure I've heard some of you as well, did not know what it was really about until we broke it down. The standards look like bullet points, and then you break the bullet points, and then it has paragraphs and paragraphs, and I, and I applaud Mr. Chang, I applaud Mr. Kennedy that dissected those paragraphs to give us a more meaningful understanding of what we're in control of, what our community is in control of, and what we can and can't do, right? As the law sometimes can be extremely vague, and what's fed to the communities across our state and the country are, is also very vague. So for me, in this position, I want to educate people. I don't just want to slam things, something across the aisle. That's simply not my, you know, motive. If that's what politicians are doing, kudos to them, but I would prefer to walk in a line of, this is where we're at, we're educating people, let's, let's broaden what that means, okay? Any old business for anyone else? Thank you. Next on the agenda is new business item 12 point 1. Is there any new business the board would like to discuss? Perfect. Section of 13 point 1, I'd like to open the floor to hearing of citizens. Is there any motion to open the floor to hearing of citizens' remarks? Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, thank you. Is there any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Never, right? Thank you, board. Any member of the public who would like to address the board? This is on absolutely anything that you desire in your heart. Please state your name and street address. You have five minutes. We have no one presently here. Mr. Kennedy?
Caramel.
Caramel Bernie, 162 East Fort Lee Road. Two things. Mr. Kennedy, thank you for doing the presentation on the health the other night. It was my understanding, I didn't get to see the slides, that you were going to send out all the slide presentation to everybody. I wanted to know if that was going to happen. I just listened to it, I couldn't see the slides. And number two, when do you expect the park test scores from the spring to be out? I just want to see what the scores are for my son, so I just wondering when they get distributed. That's it.
Okay. First, yeah, we will be posting the slides on the website, so, and then I'll send a link out, and then we will be presenting the test scores in October, and personal scores are being mailed out on September 29th. So everyone will be receiving them that, you know, that weekend, you should get them, and then in October, we'll do a district review of where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Thank you. No one else? I would like a motion to close hearing of citizens on agenda items only?
Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez? Do I have a second? Mr. Chavez, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Now on to executive session in section 14 dot 1 of agenda, board president, oh, that's for me. I write it and then I forget. There it is. Now therefore be resolved by the Bogota Board of Education that whereas C dot 231 PL 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law, authorizes a public body to meet an executive or private session under certain limit, limited circumstances, excuse me, and where said law requires the board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting before it can meet in such an executive or private session. Now therefore be resolved by the Bogota Board of Education that it does hereby determine that it is necessary to meet in an executive session on September 20th, 2022, at 7:24 PM to discuss matters involving negotiations, litigation, and personnel, or personnel, that the matter discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required and action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a public meeting. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Motion, John.
Ortega? Do I have a second?
Second, Coles?
Mrs. Coles? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. What would we say, 10 or 15 minutes? Max. Stay tuned.
How long, how long did we take?
Can I have a motion to go back to public session?
Motion, Cole.
Do I have a second?
Alvarez.
Alvarez? All in favor, you have the real call, Mr.?
All in favor.
All in favor?